Alright guys, we are here. I'm here with Kevin Rouse and he is running for the city of Northport, um, for the city commission.
Yes sir.
And you're going up against who? Pete Emmerich, right?
Pete Emmerich in District 4.
Okay, now this is a nonpartisan election, so it doesn't matter if they're right or left, Republican, Democrat. But I gotta tell you, it does matter because they all threw that out at me. So, um, and I'm not gonna ask you what you are. So, why don't we start with telling a little bit about yourself, maybe clear the air on any issues that are out there? And, uh, let the people know what you, what you're all about.
Sure, I mean, first I want to thank you, thank you.
No problem.
Seriously for coming because the more coverage down in Northport, the better. We need as much as we can get. Our papers, you know, only have so much, you know, uh, time in the day also. So, thank you for that. I know you have a big following, seriously.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, I was born in Sarasota in nineteen seventy-six. And I went to all the local public schools Sarasota, grew up through the Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, you know, learned plenty of good, good values there. And I graduated from Booker High School in nineteen ninety-five. Went on into the, enlisted in the United States Coast Guard. And did, uh, service out in Seattle, Washington. Traveled all over the world to Antarctica, from South Pole to North Pole, basically, so.
I didn't know you were a veteran. I'm a veteran, that's a good thing.
Yes sir.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They, they, they don't get enough, uh, you know, uh, praise by the country or support by, by many areas. And I think that even locally, we'll get, maybe I can get into why, how work on that too.
Sure.
Uh, but from there, uh, you know, I, uh, you know, uh, when my enlistment in the Coast Guard was completed. I moved back home and, uh, I regained my dream to get into fire EMS. And went to fire academy, uh, EMT academy or school you call it. And, uh, then I had a successful, about eighteen year career.
Okay.
I had a year and a half with City of Punagorda. And then I had, uh, the remainder of my career. Up until last year, I suffered a back injury on an on-duty accident in the morning.
Okay.
And I can't really, you know, get into the details right now of, you know, the entire thing. But let's just say it's a, it's another bureaucratic mess with, uh, some government. And also, uh, you know, on levels that are higher than us right now, so.
Yeah, and that's something that's being litigated right now, so obviously he can't say much. I can say that some of the rumors I'm hearing or reading out there on social media, don't always believe them and, uh...
I wanna touch on one.
Okay, go ahead.
There is a rumor, because I am a very strong advocate for, uh, medical cannabis. And I've seen what it can do for people. I've also seen what opioids, uh, can do in the opposite direction.
I'm sure you have, isn't it?
For many, many people.
First responders.
Very sad, so.
Yep.
Uh, you know, because I'm a strong advocate of that, there are people on social media, and I will name them by names. And, uh, here's your plug, Northport City Concerns and Northport Neighbors, right?
Yep.
I'm not, I'm not worried about giving you guys, uh, things, I just, uh, it's false. And so, if we could cut this out of the politics, that'd be great. Um, and I, you know, if you can't, it's fine anyway, I'll still lead the same. But, uh, I, I did not, I was not terminated for smoking marijuana, for being caught for smoking weed or pot. And if you watch any of my city commission meeting, or, I mean, city commission public comments. And how I try and vice-chair with the PZAB, and how I try and represent myself when it's necessary. You will see that, that is not your definition of a pothead, or lazy pothead, or someone that doesn't know what's going on.
Yeah, and I gotta tell you, I'm all for medical marijuana, and, uh, just because I have tattoos, just like Kevin here, doesn't mean I'm a pothead. Uh, so I believe you're not a pothead.
Well, thanks for that.
Um, why don't we go ahead and cover on, why, let me ask you this. Why do you wanna run for city council? What can you do that the other individuals have not been able to accomplish, or help them accomplish?
Uh, I think first and foremost, I've, I've been not in this arena of, of government, the politics, you know. But, but really, the only difference in this arena even, that I'm finding, even after years with Charlotte County. And dealing with that commission, and like I gave in public comment the other day. There are some horrible commissions that come after public safety and firefighters and, and even frontline people, and it's just wrong. There's other ways to find waste in government. Uh, I've mentioned this before too, and I'll continue to, uh, through hopeful election, uh, as an elected official. And, uh, just find the ways where it's supposed to be. But, uh, there, some things need to change, uh, uh, majorly. And I'm sorry, I maybe got off.
No, 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 this, this is your time to speak. Uh, I think everyone wants you to get off of that.
Bring me back, yeah, well, I'm trying to stay, you know, just off, uh, either side where I can. But trying to stay, you know, balanced and, and real, just, just stay real.
Let me ask you this, what is, what makes you a better candidate than Pete?
Thank you.
You're, you're, who you're going up against.
Reset me, that happens to me sometimes, so. Uh, my, my experience within the government and my own personal experiences with, with, uh... Seeing how government can control people's lives in the wrong way, when we're not involved, when we don't pay attention. When, you know, and it's, they're boring things for people, and also, people do not have enough time. And they're busy with their children, and they, that's not elected officials' fault. But here's the difference, okay? And I don't know whether Pete Emmerich will do this or not, um, I, I can't speak for him. But I would like to say, after the people believe in me enough to, you know, elect me to office. I will still, my campaign never ends, and I've told people that forever. Since I, since I started, it will never end. Meaning, when we make excuses, some commissioners and councilmen make excuses that, well, there's only so much we can do. We've asked them, we've emailed them. I will be the elected activist that goes outside of my city. To City of Sarasota, or City of Venice, or Charlotte County, where I'm pretty familiar with the inner workings of. And I will use whatever platform I have to try and make sure even other municipalities, their people are being, uh, protected. And, and they're not wasting all their tax money and those things. That's what I will definitely bring over Pete, I will, I mean, I don't know what he's gonna do. But I will walk neighborhoods still, once a month or so, with a notepad. And that's something we don't see too many of our elected officials doing.
No, once they're elected, they disappear.
And I, and service, the service should never stop, and, and so, you know, some of the commissioners, they, most of the commissioners put in a lot of time.
Yeah.
And it's just, I also feel that I, I have a very creative and forward-thinking mind. Um, you know, it's, there's things that have, you know, changed my mind, you know, throughout my career because of what I've seen. And, and it, and I've been, uh, you know, straight up and honest with the people. And I've been, you know, attacked for that, for, uh, post-traumatic stress. I've had symptoms of that. Well, who hasn't if they've done this job for eighteen years? I mean, it's on different levels, but I, I think that I still carry myself very well.
And so far, you seem like you do.
So, yeah, that's...
Let's move over to West Villages. This is a controversial issue. Um, a lot of people, some of the comments have been about your connections possibly with the developers. Here's my thought on it, you guys, West Villages is a done deal. Fuck it, it's gone. It's here, you can't do anything about it. How can we proceed? I would like to see the city council, um, work with the arbitrary, the, uh, what is it called with the trees? Have them set up different areas where they create these nature zones, do all that good stuff. Maybe control the flow of traffic from the Braves Stadium onto River Road. And West Villages onto River Road, which I heard at their joint meeting is gonna happen. Where do you stand with all that? And I know I threw a lot out at you just now.
That's alright, it's okay.
Oh yeah, and the fire department.
The fire, within West Villages?
Yeah, because they're looking at, what is it, a five-year plan, getting it out there, something like that, so...
So, I mean, we'll start, actually, I'm gonna start with the fire department.
Okay.
Because that's, uh, it's still, uh, safety and welfare of the public is still the only reason my government was created in the first place. And, uh, of course, I mean, am I gonna hold a little bit of bias towards that part of safety? Uh, yes, I am, and here's me being honest. Because we have to, if we, if first responders and fire departments aren't built, and response times are more. Then the public safety suffers, and that is my number one issue, is to protect public safety and welfare.
So are you for some of the initiatives that the city council just took in regards to keeping your A-rating? Which I think was...
You mean the ISO one?
Yeah, yeah, I, they took a few actions, but they didn't really comment on West Village, it was like tabled more, I think.
I, I think right now is, uh, they, they table it because it's truthful. And I will, I will speak the truth if I thought something was off, and the commission is aware of that too with me, and like it or not. But they, I, I do think that they're in a very challenging ti- time right now. It is true, and that there's so much going on. But if people pay attention to the actual documents and they drive through West Villages. Um, there are, you know, the, the truth is developers, as much as people don't wanna believe it, and I never knew this. But I do work, you know, with West Villages, they've been a contributor to me. Um, I've stated, I will accept monetary contributions from anybody. Because I know what I'm gonna turn the money into. I'm, and, and money does not buy my votes, and it's never going to. So, it, it's just something that, it, it, that's, that's unbreakable for me. With them, um, you know, they, they, they have tried to do land swaps with the city before, with the city arborist, to my, my understanding.
Arborist, that's it.
I haven't fact-checked this yet, so if I'm wrong, please forgive me, but, um, and I'll, and I'll make that right if I'm wrong. But they have tried to do things to give sections that they own to, to designate for conservation or protection of the environment.
The Braves have.
The, well, the, you know, West Villages, the improvement district, it's all, it's all mesh.
Alright.
It's all, that's all the same.
The Marty Black scoop there, okay.
Marty and Black, and, and Gulf Coast builder, I mean, and developers, organizations, which... I, I am coming to try and find that balance. I think we can find it, uh, it's, it's important to have the economic development.
Well, let me ask you something, on that conservation, has the city accepted some of the land swaps? Are you aware of it? If not, do you know why? Is it because they want more, there was, just didn't, wasn't the right match? Do you know any of that stuff?
I, uh, you know, without speaking to, you know, this, this actually came from West Villages officials, so... Without speaking to them to get more clarity or the documents of it, it's just what they have told me so far.
That the city's not playing ball on?
When I fact-checked it, it's true, so they've, I've gained a mutual trust there because they backed it up with me already some.
Alright.
This, now, there, on this specific, uh, I think it was a ten-to-twelve or fifteen acre tract that they wanted to do something with. Um, and trade it for something else that the city owned.
Wonder why?
The city, from my understanding, the city completely either ignored it, or they just said, that's not what was in our plans to do, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that's the council, it was more the city manager that took that action, or was it the council? Because I, I don't recall that making its way to the council.
I don't even, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, can't answer that.
Now, what about the roads? Because that's gonna be a major issue. I know the state takes it over in twenty twenty-two, they're hoping to start it, but guys, the money isn't even there yet. What's gonna happen when the Braves open up in Westfield out to River Road? And what do you think, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, right now, it's in a, I, I actually sit on the planning zoning board. And also sit on the Metropolitan Planning Organization as a citizen advisory committee.
Okay.
Up in Sarasota, Manatee.
Mm-hmm.
And we get to, you know, we see these things, and, and this public, all this is public information, just so people know. This is not a...
Yeah, you can go to the MPO site, guys, it's online.
Anything that I'm on, and any government things where you live, it's all public information. Um, if you wanna seek it, you know, instead of following rumors, and, and sometimes even journalism is off, so, you know...
But, but do you think those roads are gonna cause a major effect?
The roads, where they're at, is they're trying to look for a state, uh, they're trying to fight state. Or they're trying to go, who's gonna pay for it?
Right.
West Villages has already, has already designated, and I don't wanna misquote the wrong amount. But they have designated millions and millions of dollars already.
Okay.
Um, to the future expansion of River Road.
See, I've never heard that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
And the state, actually, with, there, it's a battle now, from what, from my understanding, it's a lot to keep up with.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Francesco, and, and I'm trying my best, but from my understanding, um, it's, it's a battle right now. With state funding compared to city and county, and, and because there are four entities that... Are part of the whole West Villages and Braves. And so, it's a, it's a, I've said it a couple of times to, you know, especially in Northport, that... I grew up in Sarasota, I saw that grow up, I saw Lakewood Ranch grow up from the beginning. And the City of Northport, I believe, right now, is in one of its, is, is heading into one of its more challenging times for leadership. One of its more challenging times, in that, in a good way.
Okay.
In a good way, because you, economic development, and it, it's important for, to have kids to do things to do, and... Or Dave and Buster's, right, and I think a lot of us like to go to places like that.
Well, let me ask you this on economic development, and I tend to hop over, as everyone knows.
Me too.
Hotels, well, right now, you guys got the Braves moving in, we had, you had, don't really have hotels, you got, what, uh... During tourist season, snowbird season, it's like ninety-three percent occupancy in Venice. I'm sure Port Charlotte's pretty packed too. Wha- what, what's your stance on hotels? Because you guys obviously need more hotels.
I think we need more, we have one that's coming, um, you know, very high-end.
Out of warm mineral, right?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be near like the Culvers and Lowes area.
Okay.
And, uh, it's, it's gonna be one of a, you know, more high, not high-end, but a nicer than the current old hotel we have now.
So what would you try to do to attract more of them to the area?
I would try, well, I, I would try and work with tax incentives with them. I would try, and even with environment, this is where the ULDC, and, that, I will jump to this real quick. This, one of my most important priorities that I suggest, even if I were a commissioner right now, is... I don't know how it needs to be done yet, um, but it can be done. We need to start pulling people off of certain projects that can wait a little while, and we need to complete our ULDC. We need to complete our ULDC rebuild and our charter rebuild.
Okay.
Because those two things, everything else will have a lot of implications negatively. If we do not get those solidly done first, and, and properly done. The tree ordinance falls within it, the zoning of commercial and residential property is under it. Um, but there, there are some things that, you know, I, I definitely don't agree with, with this commission, and, and I'm not...
You're not ever, you're not always gonna be on the same page.
It's fine, I'm supposed to voice my opinion of when I, and be able to stand alone if I need to, and I'm willing to do that. And, uh, one has been the aquatic facility. And I, you know, I, I would never have voted that through, uh, as-is. I would have, I know that it's been twenty years or so, and I, I respect Joan Morgan, and... And I respect these people that are influential and have done a lot for the community. But that's a lot of money, and my, I, I believe I was probably one of the first ones here locally. To begin suggesting that projects of that magnitude, where you have multiple options. It shouldn't be the commission's decision when to do it. We should actually go ahead and spend the sixty thousand, sixty thousand or forty thousand dollars for a referendum. But when we haven't even found out what the operating costs and how we're going to stay afloat with it yet. I, I don't know if it's gonna fail, it could be a success, but...
So you're more for referendums on these bigger ticket issues, so that you can get a feel for what the public is versus... The county commissioners and the city managers and team coming through and making this decision when it involves that much money?
I'm about, you know, if, I mean, listen, there, there's, everyone, I think, is aware there's government waste all over. And no matter where you live, and I'm about finding where the government waste is, where, you know... This would be considered government waste by many, because they have no idea how much is even gonna make or lose.
But with that, you fight uphill better, and I'm gonna use an example, in Venice, this guy came up, I put his video up, and he said, look, you guys just spent... You've just bought all these nice little blue historical signs, and he didn't know the cost. It was actually a million dollars that we used out of, um, the oil, oil spill money. Then he talked about the Hamilton Building, which they bought with no idea what to do, but put ten parking spaces there, that was a million dollars. Then they bought, spent four hundred thousand dollars on a parking lot we didn't really need out next to Sharkies. And he said, you know, instead of raising taxes, which a lot of you guys, when they say these bonds, when they say a bond for the road or a police station. That's an equal tax increase. You're paying taxes for twenty, thirty years.
At some level, you're saying.
Yeah, at some level, and it amazes me how they play with words. But, the point being is, the guy said, you had two, two-point-four million dollars there that you could've used to fund the firefighters. And now you're, you didn't do it, you spent frivolously, and now we're halt.
They just did.
Yeah, down in Venice.
Yeah, and I, I always spoke about that too.
How would you fight though, the other council members? Because I know there, it's a fight, you got s- what is it, six or seven guys? You might have one opinion, how are you gonna persuade the others that this doesn't make sense for our community?
Well, the thing is, the firefighters in Venice, alright? And this is the thing where, you know, I don't try and go above that, because it is a very, uh, very good thing. It is the IFF two-five-four-six, the union.
Mm-hmm.
So, they are under the same union that, like, I was under, and Northport is under.
Okay.
Uh, to represent them, and they, I, I g- I don't know what they're doing, but I guarantee that they are involved in that already. And they're involved, I've heard, you know, consolidation for years, and...
Yeah.
So, all those things, but it's, and they are, still comes back with them also. They are, they are considered a political, you know, organization, unions, in, in the IFF. But it's still for the most important thing that anyone ever pays taxes for. It's still for safety, and, and you have to provide equipment for these guys. You have to, you know, if you want them to remain around and be safe, they can't help save anyone's life unless they have the, the top-notch equipment.
So with that situation, would you be more for raising taxes, or for cutting the damn spending?
I, well, I, well, I'm never for raising taxes, if, until we've found where, where most of all the government waste is. And we've, there are ways to shift budgets from general, general fund is like a playbox, it's a play fund. And so, pay attention to your general fund, and see how much money is being spent out of that first. Because, uh, you know, ad valorem and things like that, they need to go to fire stations. And there's specific things that certain funds can only pay for. And that's a lot of, a lot of things that the public is not very aware of either sometimes.
Now, let me try, I wanna hit on three more issues. I don't know if you saw this, prior to coming here, I was at a senior, um, low-income facility where they're just being mistreated. I, I did an interview there, came and met you, but it's all about affordable housing. Um, you guys are a little bit more affordable here, but I saw something that showed that your affordability isn't all that great. I thought, I thought I saw something like fourteen hundred a month, and I was surprised, and Northport's that much. Um, what's your goal to try to get more attainable housing for the working class that's out working at McDonald's? And not the guy that's making forty thousand a year? Well, uh... Well, maybe the guy making forty, but primarily those other guys.
I'm glad you brought that question up, man, it's, uh, you know, they're, they're, and, and let's go with West Villages right now, okay?
Okay.
And how they're actually trying to help work with the city.
They are doing something, right?
Workforce housing, they're trying to bring. Now, here, I'll have here, I mean, this is an incorporation that my wife and I started.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not for, uh...
Oh, tiny homes?
It's not for gain, it's not for monetary gain for us. It's for me to utilize, legally utilize, the platforms I have to work with the planning zoning board that I'm on. To work with Metropolitan Planning, Ca- Sarasota Housing Authority and all that.
Uh-huh.
And try and get a form of sustainable, affordable, whatever you wanna call it, pocket communities. They need to be considered pocket communities. Because most, the mo- the, the mo- the majority of the public, I would say, would not want a home next to them that was two hundred square feet. If theirs was fifteen hundred, and it...
Yeah, non-minerity concept, yeah.
It would mean, most people, even around the country, probably would not like that, unless it's rural, and you're spread out.
Yes.
So, it's, whether you call them tiny homes, like we did, I mean, there, it's initiative, ULDC is still number one.
We've had a few people that have looked into that, but they've gone nowhere. But I, you refreshed my memory here, isn't there something being done out with West Villages about affordable housing? They're gonna give a plot of land or something?
It's the city, there, there was a park, the, the, it was city-owned property, because the city, you know, mo- a half or so is on...
That's right, Marty Black wanted to do what Venice did with, uh...
Sixty, or, uh, what was it, sixty acre park, or it's, you know, I might be off on the acreage, but a large, large park. And that's where they brought up in their joint meeting with our, uh, Northport City Commission. And that was a great meeting, they need to have, you know, more of those, and, and they're going to. But he brought up workforce housing.
Yeah.
Which can be the...
But something that backfired on that, and I, I listened to that meeting. And what he's talking about, guys, if you remember, in Venice, Marty Black, I think, was their city manager there. They have a piece property.
He's the director of the...
Well, back then he was.
Okay, yes, Venice.
There was a property out on Knights Trail, they gave it to, um, the people that build the houses, um, oh god, Habitat for Humanity. They said, but you gotta build houses within X amount of years, or you can't have this land. Then, the process after that, after Marty left, they haven't been able to get the codes that they wanted. And you probably see me post some stuff. And I remember hearing Marty say that, and I'm like, I, I don't think Marty's aware of the fact that these guys haven't been able to get codes. The code enforcement or the, you know, all the stuff they need to build, and now they're looking at either losing the land. They tried zoning, and the city said, no, you're not selling land we gave you. So, how would you, if they do something like that, how are you gonna ensure that when you're gone? That the codes can be met, and that these guys can, habitat, the Habitat of Humanities, where the world can pers- continue building homes there? Without running into another commission with another dream, or another purpose?
And I've, I've considered those too, because there's only so much you can do, and, and then you're termed out, and, you know, there're good and bad of term limits. But, um, you know, I, I do, I do hope to serve, you know, both terms here, and, and, and do enough. And the only way to, it's, the bureaucracy basically, or prioritization of the correct things, like the ULDC and things like that. Or, we have to work with developers as well, and, and I see a lot of, on every type of thing. I still see things where people will just jockey for, you know, uh, they will pander. Or, you know, they will switch their position, sometimes from hearing from the public, which is good. You know, if they hear from enough, and they have good factual points. But a lot of other times, it's just, you can see it, like, they, they change their positions and stances based on who may vote for them next time. Based on, and they don't wanna piss off the environmentalists, they don't wanna piss off the developers. They, they're trying to maintain that balance, but they're, but they, it's obvious that they're trying to. And, and we should be working more with, especially with, now, the developers that aren't willing to do those things. Why should you support them? But, but the ULDC and, and the charter, how would I, as a commissioner? Even though the charter is, will probably be, well, it might not, it probably might not be done by the time the elections are. But as a commissioner, I will continue to ensure that the charter has the proper language in it for the future.
So that with, uh, Habitat of Humanity, Marty Black type situation happens here, they won't have problems on the road?
Yeah, without any specifics of who, because I don't know who's gonna be involved yet, or, or, you know, I mean, these are just examples of, of...
I mentioned his name because he brought it up, but, yeah.
These are just people that have tried, and, and there might be others here, I'm not aware of, um...
See, a lot of people might be amazed, I actually listen in City Northport Commissions, I listen to the county, I listen to City Sarasota and City of Venice. Sometimes I get them all confused.
But the city charter, I, there's, the language matters, and that's where, another thing that, um, I do have, you know, I think I have a, a little bit of a... A benefit over my opponent with, is contractual.
Okay.
And through union contracts and...
Negotiating, yeah.
Negotiating, and, and actually, this is the first time publicly I've, uh, brought this up, but I, I had a, um, I'm, I don't beat my chest. But I'm very proud of the fact that I worked last election cycle, I think it was a year or so ago. When our local Northport firefighters were dealing with horrible contract issues. And, uh, their union membership was so beaten down, that they just, they, you know, that's what happens, people don't get involved anymore. And their union DVP was having a hard time, you know, because he didn't get support because of that.
Okay.
So it's a snowball that happens, but I had a, I had a big hand in that. I sent every, I went through their entire thirty-eight-page contract, and I highlighted the things that, that I knew were really, really wrong. That needed to be fixed for the guys out here risking their lives all the time. And, uh, it was, it was, it, before the, the night before the commission meeting. And ex parte was, you know, uh, was released in the meeting. I sent every commissioner there, all five commissioners, an email of every page of that contract highlighted with notes. And how it compared to our contracts over time, just language. Because Charlotte County, you can't expect to get paid the same as a county, you know, unless you start building with Braves. And then our, then, then you will catch up in size, as, as population, economic growth, and things like that. But I, I'm proud to have been a part of that, and, uh, that, that's actually one of the proudest things I've done. And even that, I may not have done in, in all the perfect ways, like, you know, through some of the fire guys, you know, they... But it's, it's a difficult situation, and I focus on the results.
It can be, it can be difficult, I've seen it.
How we get there, I, you have to use some unconventional methods sometimes, but the, all I know is that I'm so happy for, for them. I'm so happy for our Northport fire guys, and our police got a raise too. Um, you know, some, someone argued that it, it's, it's not so much even about their monetary raise, but, uh, their staffing is an issue.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that...
That's a whole different story from some of them.
That comes down also to city manager and commission leading through city manager. Because, I'll just leave with this, with, I mean, whatever other questions you got. But commissioner's duty is, is just to direct city manager, listen to staff presentations. Give staff ideas to bring back to them, work back through the city manager, not to communicate with each other on things, that's protecting the process. Um, you know, and right now, every municipality, I think there are ways that are happening right now. Where the councils, or commissions, or house representatives, you know, even on state levels, they're making their own... They're just kinda making their own ideas without going through the proper process. And that's one thing that, that I will always try and protect. Because it's, it's not a, I've said it in public meeting to my planning zoning board own members, my first meeting. I said it, they were, some of them were speaking about my property, how is this gonna affect me? And, and I said, I, no disrespect, but I joined this, and I serve. When we're up here behind this, we are, we are not here for us. I'm not here to think about my property and my values when I'm sitting on this dais. Whether it's planning zoning board, or whether it's future elected office. And I think that is a major issue, is, in some areas, more than maybe ours even.
Okay, let's, let's hop over to hospitals. Um, somebody came on and said, instead of Venice, they should've built a hospital over in Northport. Northport's, um, was actually turned down for theirs during the process. And I know there's a huge push right now, but it seems to hit a lull, you know, for a hospital. What, and I'm not sure if it's, uh, someone once told me they can't get enough specialists up here. What's your idea? Are you gonna continue that push to bring in a hospital, another hospital to Northport?
Yeah, I'll continue to push for, uh, let's call it advanced healthcare.
Okay.
Uh, whether we call it a, you know, I, personally, I don't feel that our population now sup-. Needs to support a huge Sarasota Memorial Healthcare type of a system.
Okay.
We just need to have the advanced healthcare, the proper ones in place, which I ha- I do have knowledge of from, from responding and, or. Taking people to Northport Emergency Room, that's the biggest thing, public safety again. Northport Emergency Room, you can't even accept stroke patients or heart attacks or, so you, that's a big issue there, so. Advanced healthcare for cardiac, pulmonary, obstetrics, all these things, that's more important than us concentrating on a, a, a big. Corporate, even private conglomerate thing that they are greedy, greedy hospitals and they have problems. They have sewage in their halls and, and Venice has had that issue, I think it's, you know, a couple of times and. We, I, I just will never be able to accept that as, as any form of leadership within the city. I do want a hospital, I want, or I want some sort of a healthcare facility. More mineral springs has been suggested and, and I don't, I would not be. Against that if, as long as there was a buffer, a, a, a large acreage of buffers protecting the actual springs itself to. And, but a healing holistic to use, but also specialties, surgical. And we don't, we don't have to do that, or, you know, there's, there's so many ideas and the thing is, they're just my suggestions. And what I will maybe okay with, or what I need to hear more info on before I'm, make a final decision. And not be just a shotgun, yes, we need it, let's do it. I, I can't operate that way because even with a hospital. Our city is gonna, it will end up getting screwed by a hospital, just as Venice has over the years. Now, my wife has been with Sarasota Memorial Hospital, uh, non-clinical, uh, for over twenty years and. She's worked with, you know, anyone from David Verender to, you know, to the people, but she's not on the school, she's not on the board.
Mm-hmm.
People need to realize that the hospital is a political entity itself. And even the CEO and, and the hospital board, they meet and they're the ones that make the decisions. So the hospital board. They, they say that they are moving down here. Uh, we don't know whether to believe that or not. You, there's no way to prove it. It's just you have, you know, Sarasota Memorial is a very respected hospital. I think they do have plans to come down here. My understanding, but it may be eight, ten years, right? And it, it is proposed to be within West Villages, a hospital.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, now future land use and, you know, of it within West Villages, but my suggestion is, you know, until that time. There are ways that we can start bringing in specialties, added one at a time, that the, and, and, and world class doctors. Just one at a time and try maybe a stem cell therapy type of doc, umbilical type.
Yeah.
And, and new holistic medicine, that's why I brought up the springs, you could make a portion of that, and there's sixty acres. You could make a portion in that that which would help economic development. It would help healthcare, advanced healthcare. You could put surgical services, all the conventional medicine on one half. And then it could curl back around and holistic on the other side with medical cannabis opposing the pharmacy. With a chiropractor opposing the DO's office or that, you understand what I'm saying? So there, there's a lot of creative ideas that, that I have and I, I, I'm willing to take suggestions as long as it balances. As long as it tries to find that, the best balance we can between just senseless, clear cutting, right? I'm not, I'd never be for that and I've written an article in the papers for, for that and we need to find a better balance, but it's the ULDC.
Well, let's go.
Can't do anything till we do that.
Let's go with one more question that is gonna vo- involve the ULDC and Warm Mineral with, where do you foresee that? Now, I think they're finally making a profit. Eh, ever since Northport took it over. They wanna build, uh, I think a luxurious hotel and some shops and stuff. I, I believe that's what last I heard.
A boutique.
Yeah, what are your thoughts on that? In the direction they should go?
I, I actually, I mean, said it, for me, as long as the, but there's sixty acres worth of things that are buildable that may be, you know, mostly non-invasive. I mean, or invasive trees or, or pine trees and, I, look, I don't like to kill living things either. I've saved them my entire career. That's what I've been, tried to do, but, you know, in order to make a community thrive, you have to build and so. As long as Warm Mineral Springs, when we're speaking about that, and the environmentalists are probably gonna, you know, just be all over me for this and, and that's okay. Because I know what I stand for. We, there's sixty acres free.
Yeah.
There's twenty acres of the springs right now.
Okay.
So we could put a ten acre or fifteen acre buffer, we could even protect. Certain portions if there's a little area, you know, with another acre buffer. There's plenty of room in there where we could, uh, afford. The environment could still afford to take out that, but you can work with the developers where you don't allow them to take out oak trees. This big for nothing. And there's ways you can do that, I believe, through just working with tax incentives with them. Uh, breaks for, we all know, I mean, we're all aware that most businesses, right? When they come to a new area, when they open up. It takes a couple of years for them to really burn, start making profit.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, especially newer type boutiques and things like we talk about. Um, so maybe for the first couple of years, the city gives them a little bit of a reduced rate their first year on their impact or their. And then they're paying money anyway for trees they take down. So, I mean, find a way where they're building, you have to clear them out where they go, wherever a building is, but. Let them know that there, you have to develop this in a way that is gonna protect. Our old, at least our heritage oaks and our, you know, even in your parking lots, and there are ways to do it. But it's not fair to, to ask developers to do that if the ULD's, if they're following the ULDC correctly like they are now.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're not, you have to offer them incentives as well, you know, it's a given take. And so you offer them some tax incentive breaks somehow. I'm not an expert on all this. That's why I have finance department, right? As a commissioner, hopefully, I mean, that's why I have those people. They should be the experts.
Yeah, they do the research and you make the decision based upon the research.
Upon the public's input.
And public's input.
And based, yes.
What I'm gonna do now is, I'm gonna, um, give you a chance to close it off. I'm gonna go behind the camera. Let people know where, when you're doing it, where they can go to support you financially or to pass flyers out, your website and all that info, so. Kevin's gonna close it out. I'm gonna flip behind the camera.
Thanks, man.
Yep.
So I appreciate you guys listening. Uh, I'll try and, uh, keep it as real as I can for you always. And, you know, among all rumors and political campaign shenanigans and all that, but you can, uh, follow me. Uh, you can request me even as a personal friend on Facebook and I do vet people, you know, uh, decently anyway, but. I'm not, I'm not, uh, worried about that and you can also visit my campaign page. It's Kevin M. Rouse. For Northport Commission two thousand eighteen, so I appreciate likes on there. Uh, you know, if, if you wanna donate, you know, or contribute, or I say sponsor the cause, sponsor, you know, the, the, the proper representation. Uh, even if it's not where you live, if you want this more in your government, I will help you get it in your government still. And so if you'd like to contribute, uh, campaign, you know, checks can be made out to Kevin M. Rouse. Campaign account and, you know, I'd appreciate every one of your support. I, I appreciate you guys, uh, listening to. Some of my rambling, sometimes I do, but we're, we're trying to get to a better place, so, uh, God bless, much love.
And, and one other thing, I want you guys to know, I'm not being biased. I did offer Pete Emrich via. An email and I think I tagged him today. Um, I have not heard back from him. Actually, Kevin's the only one. I've, I've tagged a few people in Northport and, uh, so.
And I know that, you know, I mean, some people can see you as controversial too, but you're trying to.
You think?
You're trying to bring the truth still, you're trying to, and from what I've seen, you know, a lot of your things. You at least have good summaries and you, you're trying to do what's right, so I appreciate that. I don't have to agree with you, just like you're not going to with me every time, you know, and. But I think we're all just trying to get to a better spot and just, I would say, look for the ones that I consider myself to be for you all. And in your own city. If you can't find them, then pressure the ones that are, you know, wasting and that are, that seem like they're oppressing. Or there's medical cannabis in Sarasota County, which I will be at that to, you know, offer public comment as well. And I'm, you know, I'm an advocate for what the people have spoken for and what the people should deserve, so. I appreciate it again, Francesco, and for you even coming to Northport is really cool.
Awesome. Anything else?
That's it. Have a good weekend, guys.
Alright, thank you guys for joining us.